Father and heaven almighty God, but we come to you from all the grace tonight. Father, as we come, God, we're just humble, Lord God, Father, for another day of life and another time, God, you've allowed us to come, Father. And Father, as we come today, Father, we come thanking you, Lord Father, for the gift of life. We thank you for our Savior, Lord God, and we thank you, Lord Father, that you assembled those here together tonight. Father, I pray God, Father, that you'll just give us the wisdom, Father. You say in your word, if any of us lack wisdom, then we're to ask of you, Father, and you'll give wisdom, Father. Father, we pray for wisdom, God. We pray, Lord Father, for each and every one sitting at this table, each and every one in the crowd, Lord God. Father, help us at this table, Lord Father, to do county business, God, God, in a way to be pleasing to you. Father, we just ask you, God, that you lead God in the reg, and lead us there toward the cross of Calvary, and it's in the name of Jesus we ask and pray. Amen.
Lay the door in the call room.
Thank you, Lord. Here.
Russell Ray.
Here.
Russell Davenport.
Here.
Karen Ashford. Here. Jim Bush.
On his way.
Here.
Ray Brandon.
Here.
Randy Damon.
Here.
Ken Davenport.
Here.
Ronnie Mann.
Here.
Next item on the agenda, read approval minutes.
As the session, they're going to give a minute, so they ask if Corey Devonport, Mark Cody, whether the research of the government, he'd be to ask that Mark Cody research. I believe two of them are the dollars. Tom, where are the other five? Yes, um, we're studying the county commission meeting times. We don't have Saturday times for ten a.m.
I don't think it's discussed, but it's always been held.
We can make a amendment or break it back again, or ten o'clock's our tradition on Saturday time. I know we're scheduling some.
So they're saying.
It's set, set time. It's on the second page. The third page, I guess.
We got five, we change the time and go to five thirty for the morning with the meeting, and we just go over time.
What changed?
There wasn't a change. Let's write. It's staying up here.
They're basically wanting to change since February.
It's in the center.
Oh, okay. So it's five thirty on Thursday, beginning a bit, and then the Saturday meeting at four.
Do they employ? Yes. Russell Ray.
Yes.
Corey Devonport.
Yes.
Karen Ashford.
Yes.
Ray Mitchell.
Yes.
Grant Brandon.
Yes.
Randy Damon.
Yes.
Ken Davenport.
Yes.
Ronnie Mann.
Yes.
Next item is approve notaries.
I have one notary. Patricia Simpson.
Any discussion?
I'm not much of a group.
Voice vote, what time? All the same, all public. Next item on the agenda is the Board of Education's budget amendment. We're going to skip six. Oh, yes, yes, yes. Yeah. At this time, on item number six, we've got the public comment here for fifteen minutes. So I hope you're up to it. Does anybody got, yes, sir.
Yeah, I got a question. I was reading in Middle Tennessee Electric magazine where they gave a county seventeen hundred dollars in October, and I understand they do that every month. Can you tell me who that goes to, and is it up any oversight on where the money goes?
I don't know. I should get that.
Well, I'm going to ask you.
Seventeen hundred dollars?
Somebody told me it went to abused kids and went.
So that.
Two friends.
They have their own oversight.
No, I'm just saying, that's where it goes.
Organization that has their own oversight.
I could verify that. I'll look into it.
I'm sure, no chance to say electric, probably, but I didn't follow it. I got something else I would say.
Did Lloyd address, yeah, Mr.?
When the Woodbury Police arrest someone, they take them over and put them in the county jail. If they have to be tried in court, they bring them over to the county, county courthouse. If they're have to be incarcerated, they take them back to the county jail. Nowhere on either of these buildings do I see where it says Woodbury. So why should the taxpayers of all the other districts have to pay for the people that the Woodbury Police choose to prosecute? I'd like somebody to answer that if they could, at the taxpayers' expense of everybody that don't live in Woodbury. That's double taxation, that's something right there, just like the garbage do, the way I see it. If I'm wrong, I apologize. They need their own jail, they need their own court system. Why should the county have to take care of the prison? Is there something loud that says they have to?
I do know, I do know that the DCA says that the county requires to have a sheriff's department and a jail. I know it's hard to.
Well, there's one, there's one solution, which is your violation, I'm trying to get run out of here, it's called Metro Government.
Derek, do you have a comment?
Oh, under law, under state law, county, sure, unless you've got a Metro Government have to take, all detainees were, the sheriff's department, the city police department, the state feds, which feds very seldom ever spring, well, if they do, they just drop them off overnight, just to, but that's a state law. You'll have to.
Well, that's, the city don't give a nothing to the county for imparts the right to do. I mean, does Dog get any money from the city?
Uh, the court system does, we don't.
That's what I'm saying. Hey, the general prison, you've got a rest, you only have a rest, it's just the same thing with garbage, can't say we're tired of it, it's double taxation, but it's not. It's the same deal, is what it is.
Do you have any other comments?
Any comments here? The only thing I'd like to make public is that I want to congratulate the Solid Waste Committee for working pretty hard the last several months to lay on the future of the convenience center. So I appreciate them regarding the process. We do have a company that is willing to work and provide the contracts and provide the architecture plans, and we're going to lay out some things to y'all at some point, to let bring before the commission, to offer a little, get some money for this engineering firm, and so I just wanted to update public on that. We should have a convenience center that's operational, a lot more efficient, hopefully here, probably about six. We don't, I don't have any place in that in the agenda. We, again, we just finished it. We can't talk about some of the other bills. We have to approve any kind of ALCO Monday by the way, but the Solid Waste Committee has approved the work of engineers and what they presented so far. Next item on the agenda, thank you, sir, appreciate your comments. Any other comments?
Hey, Brett.
Yes, sir.
Real quick, I'd like to say that the town hall meeting that you guys had a couple weeks ago was really nice, really important, enjoy it there. I hope you'll do it again, everybody had their shake, and all this, and everything, and I think we've got some commissioners that are really just trying to save money for the taxpayer, and I'll just say one more thing that I said that night, that a commissioner proposes something, or somebody out here that proposes something that's going to cost the county some money, be prepared to speak for you, expect that money to come from. It's, uh, everybody wants to do good things for everybody else, you gotta stop and say, if I got the money, so if I make a proposal, if you do something, ask you to do something, I need to be able to tell you where that money is going to come from, or we gotta cut the deal. So I'll just ask the commissioners to do that, or anybody else that's in this room to be prepared to do that, if they want to spend some money, tell me where it's coming from. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtis. I'm under, I'm at number eight. Board of Education budget amendment, end of discussion. Mr. Kurtis, or, Mr. Chairman.
Friend and Randy Damon. I'm involved here, appreciate everybody for coming. The seeming I'd like to look at, presentation on the floor.
Very much.
The floor, I got the mic, turn on the mic, there'll be one, right? I have a red button, is that now, there we go. Everybody can hear me back on the car end down there. Appreciate y'all talking, pretty come in. I want to splatter up on it. Resolution number four, you have before, yes, from Food Service, give us off county board of education meeting and regular session on November the eighth, twenty eighteen, to approve the following amendment to the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen's general purpose school budget. The amount of thirty-five thousand dollars will be transferred, if needed, from one forty-one general purpose school fund to one forty-three food service school fund for cash flow until food service funds have received these funds. This amount will be maintained in the fund until the budget due to return to the one forty-one general fund. Resolution presented to the county commission, unfair, December sixth, twenty eighteen meeting. Mr. Francis Allen is here, had some overruns in food service, particularly when it comes to wages, and all this is represented in measure, very similar to what you did, in taking funds because we've not got funds that have been brought forward because of collection purposes. So this is just a safe gap measure. To this date, we've not had utilized any of those funds, but we want to be prepared if we did. Mr. Francis Allen, do you want to make any comments regarding that?
What was the date that you were going to return that money to your fund?
It will be returned, it will be returned as soon as it's necessary, isn't it?
So you could leave it in there forever if you wanted to?
Yeah.
So what's the date?
By this budget year, Mr. Francis Allen, by the end of this budget year.
Mr. Kurtis, is this being viewed primarily due to the mandatory salary increases?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Chapter and forth.
Yes, sir. The board will be looking at that in our budget, our budget committee meetings, at least on our budget hearings, that will be done in January. That's probably one of the major items on those discussions.
Is that, are those mandatory increases to go beyond this fiscal year?
Those were in perpetual until twenty dollars is reached for each individual person. The board is scheduled to relook at that in January in our budget for the following year.
So you've got the authority to reevaluate that every year, and set aside or move forward?
Correct.
Thank you.
Jim, this is nothing new. I remember the weekend is.
What's new is that we weren't used to giving fifty cent increases, we're used to giving percentage rate increases, so one percent, two percent, things like that. So thirty years of that for food services has been a lot. So this is just a safeguard, we need these money at the end, that the board sees value in giving these people raises as well as the special, you know, all the other non-certified stuff that runs through general purpose. And we appreciate that, but we want to be able to sustain that, and food services can't sustain that over time, and I think they realize that, and if we need help, they're willing to do that. So with my cafeteria ladies can get the rates that everybody else is getting in county, it's just not food service, you know, all the non-certified has got this fifty cent raise, and we, you know, they need this thing.
Yeah, I know a lot of your income you get is from sales.
Yes, sir.
Has that improved?
This year, I think that it has.
So do they like to eat now?
Yes, I mean, that's, that's determined by the day, you know, of course, but we're doing some feeding, we're doing after school, and we're giving snacks, we're doing, we're trying to do things to increase our revenue. We just need a safeguard there, that it's okay to do this if we have to do this. They can't just give us money.
And I can ask Mr. Damon's questions too, is that the board is probably going, I can't predict what the board will do, but what I understand is that they're going to be looking at that probably going back to the percentage instead of just the fifty cent across the board.
Mr. Curtis, how come you pulling this out of general purpose school when the cafeteria fund shows you a thousand, ninety-seven thousand dollar fund balance?
Because that fund balance may change, correct, Mr. Francis Allen? Then it's subject to change after you do what we do. So it depends on what bills come in and that sort of thing.
And when we get our reimbursement, we get our reimbursement once a month, so it might, it might be there at any time of the year.
You say time, the man is supposed to be here tomorrow, what, two months?
No, I mean, it usually comes within ten or fifteen days. This month, it took a month and a half, because the end of the federal fiscal year is October thirtieth, so they were trying to get everything situated. That's the only month where it's kind of, it takes longer, like usually fifteen days.
So this is going to come back, through the federal government?
Yes, so I pay for the food, I pay for my wages, we pay for the meals, we file claims that if we've served two thousand meals, then we give us our reimbursement back.
But you said that you would pay it back by the end of the fifth year, correct?
Absolutely.
I'll put that in.
My side.
All right.
Name, Lloyd?
Yes.
Russell Ray?
Yes.
Corey Devonport?
Yes.
Karen Ashford?
Yes.
Jim Bush?
Yes.
Ray Mitchell?
Yes.
Matt Brandon?
Yes.
Randy Damon?
Yes.
Ken Devonport?
Yes.
Ronnie Mann?
Yes.
And what about you, Eric?
Our second resolution is one we were here last month for, and on October the eleventh, the county board of education, a motion was made by Jake and Fan, signed by Mike Elrod, to ask the county commission to designate forty thousand dollars for education debt service for the construction of a baseball facility at the fairgrounds, post carried, five, four, none against. And this was at, and this was as a result of one of your body addressing the board concerning education debt service, refund root repairs, and a baseball field, or baseball building, excuse me, after the fairgrounds and ball field. And so we missed the deadline, we were off on the fall break, missed that deadline. Also, Ms. Melody Hodges, with the comptroller's office, was asked in regarding doing this, and she suggested that county commission approve a budget amendment to contribute a transfer of forty thousand dollars from education debt service to the general purpose school fund. Since the education debt service fund total revenue source is school tax, not property tax, transferring funds, and not violating the taxing for one purpose and wishing for another. Also, will tax resolution states for school's construction, renovation, school's purposes, for using a wheel tax revenue to construct a school locker room, which is within the allowable uses of revenue and peers. And so what we did, I contacted the county executive, Bush, and also Diane, and what I did there, as stated tonight during the county commission meeting, is a formal request to please place a budget amendment for forty thousand dollars for education debt service to the county county schools general purpose fund for the construction of a baseball facility on the agenda, as first out of new business, just married out of nine, which was out of eight tonight, for the December sixth, twenty eighteen meeting, both the county commission. And again, the board, our county school board, has voted to ask for me to be here to do this tonight. Also have members of the baseball team here, Coach Tom Jones is also here, we have assistant coaches, parents, who would like to see this facility constructed, and we appreciate my former students here tonight, looking at this government process. So I would just ask to hear the message of the county school board.
Well, you know, I mean, I'm going to run back to our first meeting we had, where we discussed the leasing of the property, and what was told us at the time that there would be no school funds to be used in this process. Now, you're asking for forty thousand dollars of your school funds to do this, okay? Also, I don't understand, all right, y'all went ahead and y'all voted to put roofs on three buildings.
And that is incorrect, sir.
Huh?
That is incorrect.
You, you've got three buildings that you're going to put roofs on?
No, sir.
Two.
Two. Two. And that is, that's right now, that'll be, that'll make your name to that issue coming up in January.
All right, and as a cost, how much, how much are the two roofs going to cost?
Well, one of them is one point eight million, and the other at the high school, and the other is six hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. That was incorrect by paper, so I don't see Kevin here, that was incorrect, but was not what we remember it was, so.
Okay. So one was one point what?
One point eight million, according to what do the county?
And then you had six hundred thousand for the other?
Correct. But the issue tonight is baseball field, when it gets the roof seriously won't?
All right, I understand that, but we're talking money, okay? Total, I'm looking at a big picture here, I'm just not looking at forty thousand dollars. You know, y'all have needs and wants as far as roofs and all this, okay? And I understand that part, but I can't understand when the commission was promised one thing, then you turn around and say, well, that isn't right. And I have a problem with that. If somebody tells me something, that's what we go by. And I rest assured you, the vote that come up to lease all that property was there, was on the very conversation I had with the coach today, okay? And it was said, and you were here, that there would be no school funds used to do this building. Am I not correct with that?
Yes, sir, at the time, that was correct.
Okay. So with you saying that, and then what was said? I'm sorry, I can't go along with this. When y'all have other needs.
You have questions for?
What changed to keep, what changed? I mean, something had to change where the, you're saying, you were saying, no, we're not going to use our funds, and then now all of a sudden, we're looking at forty thousand. So what changed?
I think that was addressed at the previous mission, not the last one, before, correct, Mr. Francis Allen?
That's correct.
I wasn't asking you.
Our donor pulled out.
Okay. Kicks in the night.
The donor, the donor pulled out, I think, Mr. Francis Allen, Chris, at the next meeting. Yes, Mr. Francis Allen?
Were any grants, have any grants up within this?
Probably Kelly Grant, right? But she said there was none at the crack top.
Do you try, do they buy any chance?
Uh, no, we just went to the county.
Maybe try Middle Tennessee Electric, there's still money there.
Yeah, we have community, Mr. Jones, you might want to address them about how you're implementing support, you still have community support?
Yeah, we've got funds, but not anywhere close to where we could build a building.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Of course, we had a donor that was going to potentially give us money, and I met with him, our athletic director met with him, and a member of the bank, and he told us, you know, hey, I'll get back in touch with you. Long story short, he had other plans for his money. It's his money, I guess, he can use it however he wants to. So after that meeting, he said he was not going to pursue that. We were kind of just left out to dry after that last meeting.
You're looking for a new donor.
Correct.
You want the county to do it?
I'm just curious how much that, you know, an architect, a surveyor, you're going to have to probably survey it all, or, you know, a lot of these things, like what is your prep work given? I can't imagine you'll be building a building for forty thousand dollars and it be a building that has all?
We have about eighteen thousand more for building.
So you're talking about fifty-eight thousand total?
Our total, our last total concrete, building, insulation, the electrical, was fifty-six thousand.
Gauges, or whatever you use, that's including, everything?
Sprinkler systems?
We do not have sprinklers on the building.
In the building, you'll need fire suppression.
It's going to be eighty-eight percent, you have, who is architect, who is, who have you already?
Well, it's a good process.
Was you approached, Mr. Bush went over and looked at the Red Center? You have showers, you have water, you have access to do what you need to do at the Red Center?
I've not been for that.
Just to clarify that portion, is that, given this issue brought to my attention concerning this facility to be built, I was under the impression that it was because we had no access to bathrooms, showers, and things of that nature, so I think me and Mr. Kurtis and several others went over to the community center and walked and toured to make sure that that is, if anybody has an option for you. I think it was addressed that visiting teams had to go to the local restaurants and establishments.
I sent them to Tuberville Dollar General.
And I think you are aware, at least, there is a place for you.
Our own parachutes, Tuberville Dollar General.
There is, there is the community center, is available, it's up to, it's, all you have to do is coordinate that, I think that Mr. Curtis is aware of that, make sure if you need anything, keys, or that nature, we can provide some limited maintenance and open it up for you, you can access it, send it back to the ballroom. That's, that's the only thing that I, I thought was incumbent upon the county, and sure, I thought that maybe the facility may be disrepaired. So the community center is available, is that the question?
But you're saying it's available for dressing and changing clothes and the bathroom?
And shower, correct, that's it, yeah, just the back, the back side is available, that where it goes toward the pool. There's two locker rooms that are, are in pretty decent shape, decent light maintenance, but hot water's on, cold water's on, I've toured them, but thank Mr. Curtis also walked the ground with that.
That was what I was going to say.
There should be external access to the?
And there is external access to the.
Can I address Randall's question earlier? You were talking about spending money, so just as a reference, you know, this is coming out of education debt service fund?
Which is their money.
Which is the school's money. And you can correct if I'm wrong, but the comptroller told us that we cannot legally spend that money on anything other than school debt, is that correct?
Correct.
And the referendum says that, is that not correct? And currently, they have one point six million dollars in our account, and the county owes them another million due to be paid back in February, along with an additional seven hundred thousand that we borrow or actually spend illegally, um, years back.
Over, well, over a decade.
Over, yeah, a year.
And so, what we did, I contacted the county executive, Bush, and also Diane. And what I did there, as stated tonight during the county commission meeting, is a formal request to please place a budget amendment for $40,000 for the education debt service to the county school's general purpose fund for the construction of a baseball facility on the agenda as first out of new business, just married out of nine, which was out of eight tonight for the December sixth, 2018 meeting of the county commission. And then the board, our county school board, has voted to ask for me to be here to do this tonight. Also have members of the baseball team here, Coach Tom Jones is also here, we have assistant coaches, parents, who would like to see this facility constructed. We appreciate my former students here tonight looking at this government process. So, I would just ask to hear the message of the county school board.
Well, you know, I mean, I'm going back to our first meeting we had when we discussed the leasing of the property and what was told us at the time that there would be no school funds to be used in this process. Now, you're asking for forty thousand dollars of your school funds to do this, okay? Also, I don't understand, all right, y'all go ahead and y'all voted to put roofs on three buildings.
That is incorrect, sir.
Huh?
That is incorrect.
You, you've got three buildings that you're gonna put roofs on?
No, sir.
Two.
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 And that is, that's right now, that'll be, that'll make your name to that issue coming up in January.
All right, and as a cost, how much, how much are the two roofs gonna cost?
Well, one of them is one point eight million, the other at the high school, another is six hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. That was incorrect by paper, so I don't see Kevin here, that was incorrect, but it was not what we remembered it was, so we won.
So, one was one point what?
One point eight million accordingly, we do the county.
And then you had six hundred thousand for the other?
Correct, but the issue tonight is baseball field, when it gets the roof seriously won't.
I understand that, we're talking money, okay? Total, I'm looking at a big picture here, I'm just not looking at forty thousand dollars. You know, y'all have needs and wants as far as roofs and all this, okay? And I understand that part, but I can't understand when the commission was promised one thing, then you turn around and say, well, that isn't right. And I have a problem with that, if somebody tells me something, that's what we go by. And I rest assured you, the vote that come up to lease all that property was there was on the very conversation I had with the coach today. And it was said, and you were here, that there would be no school funds used to do this building. Am I not correct with that?
Yes, sir, at the time, that was correct.
Okay, so, with you saying that, and then what was said? I'm sorry, I can't go along with this. When y'all have other needs.
You have questions for?
What changed to keep, what changed? I mean, something had to change where the, you're saying, you were saying, no, we're not gonna use our funds, and then now all of a sudden, we're looking at forty thousand. So, what changed?
I think that was addressed at the previous mission meeting, not the last one before, correct, Mr. Johnson?
That's correct.
Our donor pulled out.
Okay. Kicks in the night.
The donor, the donor pulled out, I think, Mr. Johnson, Chris, the next meeting. Yes, sir.
Were any grants, have any grants up within the school?
Yeah, probably Kelly Grant, but she said there was none at the crack of dawn.
Do they pay any chance?
Uh, no, we just went to the county.
Maybe try it, middle Tennessee electric, there's money process, there's still money there.
Yeah, we have community, Mr. Jones, you might want to address them about how you're implementing support, you still have community support?
Yeah, we've got funds, but not anywhere close to where we could build a building.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Of course, we had a donor that was going to potentially give us money, and I met with him, our athletic director met with him, and a member of the bank, and he told us, you know, hey, I'll get back in touch with you. Long story short, he had other plans for his money, it's his money, I guess, he can use it however he wants to. So, after that meeting, he said he was not going to pursue that. We were kind of just let out to dry after that last meeting.
You're looking for a new donor.
Correct.
You want the county to do it.
I'm just curious how much that, you know, an architect, a surveyor, you're gonna have it probably surveyed off, or, you know, a lot of these things, like, what, what is your prep work in? I can't imagine you'll be building a building for forty thousand dollars and it be a building that has.
We have about eighteen thousand more for building.
So, you're talking about fifty-eight thousand total?
Our total, our last total, concrete, building, insulation, the electrical, it was fifty-six thousand.
Gauges or whatever you use, everything, that's including, everything.
Sprinkler systems?
We do not have sprinklers on the building.
In the building, you'll need fire suppression.
It's gonna be eighty-eight percent, you have, who is the architect, who is, who have you already?
Well, it's a good process.
Was you a promise, Mr. Bush went over and looked at the red seat? You have showers, you have water, you have access to do what you need to do at the red seat?
I've not been for that.
Just to clarify that portion, is that, given this issue brought to my attention concerning this facility to be built, I was under the impression that it was because we had no access to bathrooms, showers, and things of that nature. So, I think me and Mr. Curtis and several others went over to the community center and walked toward it to make sure that that is available, has an option for you. I think it was addressed that visiting teams had to go to the local restaurants and establishments.
We sent them to Tuberville Dollar General, correct?
And I think you are aware, there is a place for you.
Our own parachutes, Tuberville Dollar General.
There is, there is the community center, is available, it's up to, it's, it's, all you have to do is coordinate that, I think that Mr. Curtis is aware of that. Make sure if you need anything, keys, or that nature, we can provide some limited maintenance and open it up for you, you can access it, it's back to the ballroom. That's, that's the only thing that I, I thought was incumbent upon the county, and sure, I thought that maybe the facility may be disrepaired.
So, the community center is left, is that the question?
But you're saying it's available for dressing and changing clothes and the bathroom?
And shop, correct, that's it, yeah, just the back, the back side is available, that, where it goes toward the pool. There's two locker rooms that are, are in pretty decent shape, decent light maintenance, but hot water's on, cold water's on. I've toured them, but thank Mr. Curtis also walked the ground.
That was a call. There should be external access to the.
And there is external access to the.
Can I address Ranald's question earlier? You were talking about spending money, so, just as a reference, you know, this is coming out of education debt service fund?
Which is their money.
Which is the school's money, and you can correct it if I'm wrong, but the comptroller told us that we cannot legally spend that money on anything other than school taxes, is that correct?
Correct.
And the referendum says that, is that not correct? And currently, they have one point six million dollars in our account, and the county owes them another million due to be paid back in February, along with an additional seven hundred thousand that we borrowed or actually spent illegally years back.
Over, well, over a decade.
Over, yeah, a year back, so, that's where that money's come from, it, it don't, it don't, if, if we vote to approve this, this does not raise taxes in any capacity, it does not cause any budget to, to not have any money in it. It's simply money that you as a tax payer, when you buy your license, you are repaying, it's sitting in the bank right now, and all we're doing against it is borrowing. That's it, that's the only thing that money does.
Is there a government fee that you can use from a bank for this forty thousand dollars?
No, no.
Ask him a question.
They can't move the money.
They have to pay a, they have to create it in order to move the money out of that account.
According to Mel Hodges, for the money.
Education debt service has to have a debt issue.
He's going to, general debt service, unless you borrow money and they repay them, you cannot take the money out of that account in one swift step.
So, then you can go to the bank, get a loan, then turn around and take the money that we.
It's sitting in the education debt service fund, one point six million dollars.
We could take two hundred thousand dollars out of that and put it in, in music for solid waste.
Trains note.
Right, but I mean, we could literally take two hundred thousand dollars, or forty thousand dollars, or fifty thousand dollars, and say, go over there and take the parking lot, could we?
No. Not unless we have.
Not unless you go to the bank.
But we can have to pay it back.
And then you bought, and then you pay interest from you borrowed.
Correct, so, this is money that only the schools can use.
And only if they go get a motor.
So, you go get, are you gonna go get a motor?
If that's what you have to do.
That's what I have to do.
Well, you know, I like the argument about it being.
The school board.
About the school board. You know, I appreciate the argument about it's school money, and they can do what they want to, but that's not the issue. The issue is, what's the greatest need for the county's children?
That's not for us to decide, that's the school, they're the ones that set the priorities of what they want to spend, if they want to go build a parking lot, a playground, or, or a cafeteria, that's their job, not ours.
They may have the authority to do that, but I have the authority to express my opinion and my concerns.
I'm, I'm with that, but we can't appropriate and enable them to do.
My concern is, how much of your debt payment here?
We'd have to do some, I'd have to do some research on that, because it's done, that so just, over that, that was borrowed back in two thousand, two thousand and three time period, which is done, yeah, somewhere.
Around eight hundred thousand dollars, then you got one point five million for your roof. To me, I am, I am, when you came, what I really remember, and it really touched my heart, we talked about, we have catastrophic roof failure.
Absolutely.
It could actually fall in on our kids, and we have buckets out at Woodland Grammar School right now, that the teachers are, are really, you know, they're spending more time catching water than they are teaching kids nearly, and that, that's not exactly what you said, but in my mind, that was just such a concern.
Right.
And right now, the way we are tied on our money, it really, it really is a concern, really, and you know, it's kind of like it's Christmas coming up, and you got to remember that we have, we have funds we need to pay. If we were in my household, we have things, and I can't just go out here and just spend with no regard, knowing that I've got a leaky roof or a, you know, like a electric bill and all these things, and I'm not talking about that it compares with an electric bill, but it's really concerning me, really concerning.
As soon as this issue is resolved, my bill, my little, having resolution, or asking to put us on board, same day, and first thing on the agenda for the January meeting.
Let me ask you, well, let me say one, there are two things, one, twenty sixteen, this board, the ex-board, voted to relieve the school from paying sixty thousand dollars of wheel tax.
That's money, that's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a roof, Jim, you better.
We relieved them.
Of sixty thousand dollars?
No.
Yes, I've got the red solution in front of me.
We relieved them of paying on the note.
The school board was next on the agenda, the note that the school board had voted twice to accept the three cent cut of education share in the county property tax, the three cent cut was recommended by the county commissioner, the committee, meant to guide me as the comptroller's office, Mark Barker, chairman of the committee, suggested reduce the two hundred and fifty thousand paid by the school board each year on construction of the high school. That goes for the roofs.
So, I think you're saying two hundred and fifty thousand.
Right, yeah, we.
There's sixty thousand and two hundred and fifty thousand.
Talking, we relieved them of paying on the note.
That's before.
Exactly.
Where would it have went to? It would have went to the education debt service fund, which would pay for the roofs, correct?
No.
No? What does that?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't go, it goes in their general purpose money, we don't go back into debt service.
The two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
They gained two hundred.
I know what you're saying, but the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that you voted to move, to move.
Right.
Would have went into education debt service.
No.
If they had paid it, yes, it would have.
Well, it would have went into debt.
Which would have paid for the roofs.
We're gonna have a debt analysis, I have asked Ben Rogers, and I think other people have also proceeded it too, I believe you have, I would really rather have a debt analysis to see how much money, how we're gonna cash flow, I'm looking at the cash flow sheet right now, this is what I'm gonna buy.
For what, the school? Again, these are school board issues, we, we have one appropriate move, we don't get to tell you to do that. Yes, that's what I said, appropriate move.
I think the motion that we go ahead and vote.
Yes, I said.
Colerole?
Wait, 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 does this thing here on the motion?
The motion is to give forty thousand dollars.
No, her motion is that we vote to vote on the motion.
So, we're not voting on the motion.
What?
You just have a motion and you vote on the motion?
Well, I have to.
I'll make the motion that we go ahead and vote on this forty K.
Forty K budget amendment.
Budget amendment.
What, what was presented by.
Yes, by Mr. Chris.
Last second, last second. Colerole?
Janie Boyd?
No.
Russell Ray?
Uh, no.
Cory Devonford?
Yes.
Karen Ashford?
Yes.
Jim Bush?
No.
Greg Mitchell?
Yes.
Brent Brandon?
Yes.
Randy Gannon?
Yes.
Kim Devonford?
No.
Ronnie Mahack?
No. No.
All right, next item on the page.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to point out, for the, uh, for the, uh, for the mission, we mentioned the emergency moments at the roofs, and let me, let me, I'd like to say to you, right for the roofs, if anybody needs a roof report, you raise your hand, and I will get, I will get you a roof report, instead of just, instead of just in your emails, I would be glad and happy to give you a roof report, a hard copy of our roof report. You got, you got the PowerPoint, that was April twenty seventh, and you also have, which was updated from February fifth, and then you have the detailed report, the pictures, the site visit, that they did about a year ago. So, does anybody need a copy of that that is new to the commission that does not have that?
What was the date of this?
Uh, April twenty seventh PowerPoint, I mean, I have, okay, let's go with that, I'll use that right there. Does anyone need, does anyone need an additional thing? Mr. Chairman, I'd like to formally ask the board to be put as, on item number eight or nine, whichever is first, on the January meeting of the county commission. I'll follow up to email to both Diane and to the county executive in the morning. Thank y'all very much.
Uh, Mr. Curtis, may I also say that with this, I'm getting with the county maintenance agenda, and we are going, and we're in the process of getting all the showers and everything repaired, we're having them painted in the school colors of the high school, and it will be ready for use, hopefully by the time that the Christmas schedule is over with, as far as, you know, coming back to school after Christmas. Uh, we're gonna use the inmates, I'm helping with the maintenance gentleman to get this in order, so, y'all will have.
I appreciate the use of the restroom, however, the pitching facility, the swap was really, really needed, and you made your, your point, I appreciate that, I will break here, I will take the results of this to the county more of education for action appropriate chamber.
Next item, only the number nine, Mr. Johnson, George, forward to the resident commission regarding the website, appreciate you, Greg.
Can we talk to somebody else?
No.
I'd like to thank the county executive and commissioners and the residents of Cannon County, giving me the time to demonstrate a new website that I've been working on, and others who understand this site, why this site, and why now, I'd like to give you just a little brief background. Back in twenty twelve, I sold my company and wanted to relocate to someplace with a little greater outdoors in one of those areas in River. In the process of doing that, I discovered about Cannon County and all the nice attributes you enjoy out here, I wanted to find more about Cannon County, so, what do you do? You go to Google, you ask Google anything, and they know, so, I went to the internet, and I did an internet search on Cannon County, and unfortunately, Google doesn't know everything, in fact, there was not as much information available on Cannon County that I would have liked. Uh, first of all, I found one website put up by a very angry person who really doesn't like Cannon County, and I gave some years of the commission, no one talking about it. Uh, I also found some postings from a radio station, and they were two or three years out of date, so, that wasn't particularly helpful. Now, the only thing that I really found that was helpful, was surprisingly enough, the Chamber of Commerce has a section of the Cannon County government on the Cannon County Chamber of Commerce website, that was helpful. So, I found out about Cannon County, decided to come and relocate, and I've been a resident for about the last four years now. At the time, after I moved, I went to the county executive's office, and I said, well, I did a little bit about the form representation Cannon County had at that time, I was told, very nicely, very politely, that it was being addressed, and kind of, you know, don't go away, man, just go away. Moving forward to the last county election, and we now have a new county executive, and we have several new county commissioners as a result of that election. I found out that a lot of the financial issues that was a problem in Cannon County in the previous administration, had kind of been bundled up in a little ball and kicked down the road, so to speak. With the new administration, and to their credit, they're stepping up and dealing with the hard questions that should have been dealt with a long time ago. One of those was, the county had been paying the Chamber of Commerce a hundred dollars a month, twelve hundred dollars a year, to fund that portion of the Cannon County Chamber of Commerce website, that slice of, that bit of their website. Well, with the financial situation of the county, that money was needed elsewhere, so, we stopped paying the Chamber of Commerce for that section, which indeed, they took it down, which meaning the county really had no decent representation on the internet whatsoever. So, two people at that time stood up, Kim Devonford and myself, we went to the Cannon County chief executive officer, and requested permission to reduce the website for the county, both of which were gonna be self-funded, so, no funds from the county were needed, there was no reason to go to the commissioners and request funding. Uh, I felt, and I'm sure Tim felt, that the chief county executive of the county could certainly accept a donation in the county's behalf, and in essence, that's what both websites were gonna be donations to the county, and do that at, at set no cost to the county. Now, just to get everybody kind of on board, so they can kind of understand what goes on with, with websites, with a website, you need three things. One, you need a domain, and you can consider the domain of the name similar to a telephone number, if I type in the name, and that goes out to the world wide web like a phone call. You then also need server space, you need a web hosting service, so, when that phone number comes in, there's a computer somewhere out amongst all the thousands of computers over the web that has space, and that's where the phone number goes to. The third thing is, you actually need a website that fills that spot on that server, you can think of it somewhat of an apartment building on the server, you lease space on the computer, then you basically take your furniture and move into that space, so, when the phone call comes in, that's what you see in the web. Now, when Kim and I were getting involved in this, Kim and I both purchased a variety of domains, Kim purchased CannonCountyTN.org, I purchased several domains in that regard. She also purchased hosting and built a website on the Wix platform, and I would like to thank Kim very much for finding a problem in the county and addressing it and dealing with it, and she paid for it out of her own pocket, so, thank you very much. Now, in the process of the transition, and I'm saying all of this so everybody's aware of what's going on and where we are today, because there's been a lot of confusion out there, Kim has transferred to me the domain CannonCountyTN.org, and she also made me the administrator of the website that she had constructed. Her site from the get-go was designed to be a temporary site, we have lost all representation on the Chamber of Commerce site, so, where there was a void, Kim filled the void temporarily until I could come and get up to speed. So, currently, I own CannonCountyTN.org, and in the very near future, per Kim's wishes and our agreement, that's gonna be donated to the county, that will be a county domain name. Kim had a vision, and in an emergency situation, created this type of website, if anybody went and looked at it, there was a ton of information, she took the government point of view as a stopgap measure. Personally, I take any bigger point of view, judging from the problems that I have finding out of what's going on in Cannon County, we need you to address that bigger issue, and that bigger issue is the website that we'll be heading straight to in just a moment. Uh, so, currently, I own, or don't own, but I manage the existing site, I created a new site, what is anticipated is happening, is that domain, that phone number, is gonna be directed not to go to the site that Kim developed, but it will go to the new site. So, you've typed in CannonCountyTN.org before, instead of seeing the Wix site, you'll see the new WordPress site. The site that Kim built is still going to be there, you just won't have access because the phone number changed, is that clear? Uh, so, that will sit out there until such time as whatever time period that Kim bought space on that server expires, and then it'll probably delete it. Now, there's been several issues that have come up, I know time is tight tonight, I'm gonna mention a few issues, I'd be more than willing to discuss, but for the sake of time, I will bring them up, and if there's no questions, we'll skip them. Uh, the website now is currently a dot org, there has been some discussion of it being a dot gov, is there any longer, any concern about? Is there any, one, or any concern about the website being a dot org or a dot gov?
I prefer murder of a dot gov.
And Cory is right, it would perhaps be better to have a dot gov instead of a dot org. The problem is, all that, that gov site are controlled by General Accounting Office in Washington DC. The first thing they'll wanna do is even consider giving you a dot gov, is they want four hundred bucks. They want four hundred bucks every year for as long as they have a dot gov, as well as, as, we're all familiar with government, the higher up you get, the bigger the hoops there are. There's a lot of other, um, stipulations and regulations that go along with that. Yes, it would be preferred to have a dot gov.
What's the advantages?
It's a dot gov. There are, there is, there is.
All the, yes, sir, all the information is encrypted. It does not allow second parties to come aboard, you can pay securely, it's, it's a thousand times better than a dot org, in every single way, you pay for what you get.
The website that, that I'm proposing is secure, and it's an SSL license that has web.
Is it encrypted?
Doesn't need to be encrypted.
It doesn't need to be encrypted.
Doesn't need to be.
So, any information out there, somebody can go out and just get.
Yes, and I'll get into that, 'cause that's a key function of this website that gets all the source.
Are you, is it a GoDaddy dot com?
Uh, GoDaddy dot com is supplying that, that building and that server space.
Domain by proxy?
It is a, it is a WordPress site, and the thing is, domain.
Is it, is it domain by proxy, is that what it is?
What do you mean, domain by proxy?
Well, GoDaddy is, Go, GoDaddy dot com is domains by proxy, and basically, what they do is they take your information and hide it, so other people can't see who knows that.
Oh, oh, okay, everybody does that, anybody that eyes A, that sell you a domain, can sell you domain privacy.
Correct, but that particular one.
All you have to do, all you have to do is pay up.